If you call this meeting the London Public Education Board, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Statement of adequate notice.
In accordance with London Public Education Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th, 2018, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call.
Ms. Guillaume?
Yeah.
Ms. Cozak?
Yeah.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Shihada?
Here.
Mrs. Valani?
Present.
Mrs. Welsh?
Here.
Mrs. Beviana?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Topaleski?
Here.
I'll accept the motion for the approval of the minutes.
I make the motion. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Guillaume?
Here. Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shihada?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes. Comments from the public for agenda items only. All right, seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, board members, community members, faculty and staff. Uh, Mr. President, tonight I want to start by giving our monthly HIV report. Uh, this month we had seventeen incidents reported in the district. Uh, seven of those were validated as being HIV incidents, seven were not, and three were deemed undetermined. The actions taken included increased supervision, loss of recess, ISS, and out-of-school suspension. In, uh, in other news, I think our entire community, school board members in the district is aware of the terrible tragedy that took place in Portland, Florida. I want to take a moment to express, um, my deep sorrow for the seventeen victims and their families, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. As a parent of four children first, that's what I always am, and as an educator second, um, I know I was in shock when the news of that incident, um, came through on the, on the, on the news and on the radio. And, you know, you, you just wonder, um, what if it happened in my child's school? What if it happened in a school in Linden? What could we do to prevent a tragedy like what happened in Florida? And it makes you face difficult things, difficult and uncomfortable things, and it makes you question your security practices, and it makes you question your district policies and protocol. And I guess that's a good thing, because we should be consistently monitoring our district's security protocols. We should be consistently, um, adapting to changing needs, um, to protect our kids. I send my kids to school every day, and at the very least, I expect them to come back whole. I hope they've learned some things too, but at the very least, I expect them to come home. Uh, and I know, well, we can't be prepared for everything that's gonna happen in this world that we live in. I want our parents and community members to know that we are trying our best to provide your children with a worry-free and safe environment. It doesn't always work. Sometimes things happen, but we always try to correct them, we always try to make them better when they come to our attention. We continually review our safety procedures. We routinely run emergency drills in collaboration with the Linden Police Department. After those drills are run, we have post-meetings to discuss what went well, what went wrong, and what could be improved. Our counselors and security staff work closely with our school resource officers and the Linden Police Department to ensure the safety of our children. Our students are usually the first people to know when something is wrong or something is going to happen. So the most important thing that we can do as adults is encourage students to tell someone, to talk to an adult. It is my hope that, at the very least, at least every one of our students in this district has an adult that they can go to, that they have at least one adult, and I, I believe that they have many more. But at the very least, that they have one adult that they can go to to share something if they feel that something's wrong or something is about to happen. We encourage our staff to form relationships with students so that they feel comfortable in opening up and sharing potential information. And so why don't I ask any parents out there in the audience tonight and anybody watching this is to speak to your children, um, and let them know that they should speak to a teacher or any adult if they see a problem with a classmate, danger in the outside community, a threat on social media, or anything that disturbs them. Communication is key, and we want to assure you that your child is safe in our care each day to the best of our ability. If you haven't picked up this month's superintendent report, there is a copy on the stage. Uh, my very good friend Caitlin helped pass those out, did you? Ms. Welsh, thank you very much. Thank you. This is the second month that we're giving a paper report out. Um, and it's a newsletter that's gonna be published at these meetings and will be, um, available in print here and also sent to all parents electronically through email and on social media tomorrow. It's an interactive newsletter, contains short articles, a rundown on recent news with a link to a larger story. If you read the electronic version and you click on the link, it'll take you to a bigger story, more pictures, sometimes there's a video with other content. Uh, this month you'll see highlighted the various activities that occurred in our district for Black History Month, several programs that recognize students, and other events and programs that we're very proud of in our school. So please take a moment to review that. Um, and when you, if you're a parent, you get an email to you, please take a moment to click on the links and see what else we have going on. I'd like to share something also with the board that came to my attention today, which I thought was really important. When I became superintendent, which believe it or not is almost five years ago now, we, uh, we formed a five-year strategic, uh, district planning committee, and we rewrote the Linden Public School's mission statement. And I'm just gonna read it real quick. This mission statement was developed in collaboration with faculty, staff, students. We had a large committee that helped develop, um, our whole five-year strategic plan. And our mission of the Linden Public School District is to promote distinction through the infinite resource that is Linden's diversity, combined with our profound commitment to instructional excellence, so that each and every student achieves their maximum potential in an engaging, inspiring, and challenging learning environment. It's a lofty goal, but it is our goal. The Linden Public School District is committed to developing a respect for diversity, excellence in education, and a commitment to service in order to promote global citizenship and ensure personal success for all students. That personal success for all students is at the heart of what we do every day in Linden Public Schools. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. And we have a class at Linden High School called Introduction to Education. It's a class for students who might be interested in a career of teaching. And their teacher, Mr. Fashetti, shared, um, an assignment that they had to do. Uh, it was just, uh, they, he gave them our mission statement. They're studying different educational philosophies, and he gave the students our district's mission statement, and he just simply asked them to react to it. What, what did they think of it? And I just feel like reading a couple of the things that our students said about our district. Diversity is mentioned quite a few times, and I think it's important because it's a huge part of what Linden is about. Along with that is the emphasis of helping students reach their full potential. That's exactly what we should be doing. Another student said, "My reaction to this mission statement is, I know this school does everything to help the students strive and be great students." Another student says, "Linden Public Schools does not discriminate when it comes to education. They want every child to get the same challenging education as anybody else. They want their students to reach their maximum potential in their engaging learning environment." Another student said, "I feel like the intention of this mission statement is well explained, and I think our district is committed to achieving this goal." And there are many more, but I'll read one last one. "I like this mission statement because it embraces diversity in this school, and I think the teachers and students are doing a good job because I never saw a more diverse school. I also agree with the fact of teachers inspiring students to achieve their maximum potential. Since coming to this school, I can say that a majority of my teachers have inspired me to be better." So I think that's nice. So I think that's nice to hear. From our students. All right, I'll read one more. All right, I'll read one more. You have a name, don't you? You have a name, don't you? My reaction is that Linden. My reaction is that Linden does provide a lot of great opportunities for students. Linden has great diversity. Linden has great diversity and makes sure that education is provided for. Linden continues to provide more and more for our students. The reason why I wanted to share this tonight with the board and the public is because At least I feel that. At least I feel that one of the things that we do well in this district is we listen to our students. And when we stop listening. And when we stop listening to students, that's when we will start to fail. You can learn a lot. You can learn a lot by talking to kids. They will tell you everything. Whether you want to hear it or not. I think this board does an excellent job of listening to students. I don't know how many boards of education actually have a committee that go and meet with students. We have one that meets with high school students and one that meets with middle school students. I personally have a student ambassador group, and we have a representative here tonight who's gonna do a presentation. I try my best to get out and talk to students, because I gotta be honest with you, the adults really aren't much fun, and the adults cause me a lot of stress, but the kids, we love them. I love them. So I just wanted to share that. So I just wanted to share that, and I want to thank those students for seeing that. And I hope that's, although it's a small sample, I hope that a lot of our students feel the same way. And finally. And finally, Mr. Topaleski, for, um, my superintendent's report tonight, we have some Certificates. Certificates and presentations to give out. So what I would ask is if the board would come down off the stage and have a seat. We have two presentations. We're gonna recognize our bowling team, we're gonna recognize our robotics team, and then we have a student presentation. So a lot of people know we can play basketball in it. But did you know we can bowl? Oh, we can bowl. We can do some series ball. Now, not beat per se, but we have some students who are here tonight that I want to recognize, and a coach who has been doing this for a long time. So I want to recognize first, um, our varsity bowling coach, Ms. Sherri Kazano. Sherri, would you come up here? I'm gonna say a few words, and I'm gonna ask coach to say a few words and introduce her students. The varsity bowling team had a remarkable season. Uh, the Tigers' first big win was the prestigious Charles A. Simon Baker Tournament. That was the first of many. The Tigers then captured the Union County Team Championship. We have a sophomore by the name of Anthony Goleback who placed fifth in Union County Tournament Individuals. And they faced another big test with the North Two Group Three Sectional Final at Jersey Lanes, where the Tigers cemented their sectional victory by a hundred pennies. That's pretty huge. That's a state championship. That's a sectional state championship. We have a freshman by the name of James Fitz. I can't believe he's a freshman. Where is he? Either, I'm getting old. Mom and dad aren't getting old. I know mom and dad a long time, but somebody's getting old. James Fitz gained entry to the state individual final because of his six thirty-eight series. Now, what that means is, you take six thirty-eight, you divide it by three. Now, I'm no mathematician, but that's a two hundred and fifteen or so, two hundred and ten or so average, my math people. If you're bowling over two hundred a game, uh, that's pretty remarkable for a freshman. The Tigers then completed the watch on conference season undefeated seventeen and up. Repeated Union. The hated farmers of Union. I don't know if they're as hated as they were years ago. I'm not sure about the bowling intensity is it as intense as it was good. Farmers. Tigers, farmers can't beat the Tigers. The season was also highlighted by the breaking of the school record series of three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. That's a school record. Freshman James Fitz won the individual high in average in the watch on conference at two oh four point four eight, and Anthony Goleback was right behind him at two oh four point two nine. That's amazing. And the Tigers finished fourth in the Group Three State Finals. So we have state championship, undefeated state champions here with us tonight, ladies and gentlemen. And while I'm only gonna be giving them this really nice certificate, it's, it's not really that nice. I'm joking. It's just a paper certificate. It's nice. It's nice. It's nice. Your parents are gonna appreciate it more than you. What I can tell you is that this Board of Education passed a policy several years ago that gets you state championship rings. So if you're gonna get a certain amount of money towards a state championship ring or a varsity jacket, your choice. At this time, I'd like Coach to come up and say a few words about our season and our team.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I greatly appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to just thank the board and Dr. Robotozy for having us. Um, we are definitely humbled, and we greatly, greatly appreciate it. Um, words, like I said in the article, cannot express what this team has done. I'm gonna be totally honest with you here. Michelle DeCasky, if you know her, she graduated last year. She's on a full ride to the University of Pikeville for bowling. And when she was moving around, I'd said, "You know what? I've been doing this a really long time. I think I'm gonna be done." And then my next group came, and I, I fell in love all over again. It's, it's crazy. These kids pull you in, you, you form such bonds, and for me, luckily, lifelong friendships afterwards. So that's what makes my job so rewarding, and it's, it's an absolute pleasure, and, and thank you again. And I'd also like to thank our principal, Mrs. Horry, who has been so supportive for us. Gave us a wonderful pizza party before the state sectional championship, so she takes credit for that, by the way. Um, and I'd also like to thank her, and thank you again for all your support.
Guys, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna read your names. You're gonna come up. You're gonna accept the certificate with your left hand. This is practice for graduation. You accept the certificate with your left hand, you shake with your right, and then you're gonna come up and we're gonna pose for a picture. Okay? What'd you do with it? James Fitz. Anthony Goleback. I gotta get one of these shirts. These shirts are pants. Do they come in free exotique? Garrett Lewis. Justin Bieber. And last, but not least, Matthew Soar. We're gonna take a picture. Parents, feel free to come up and take the picture, or you can steal it from our Facebook or Twitter later on. So you knew we could play basketball. Now you know we can bowl, but didn't you know that we can do robotics? For the past several years, I, I wanna say three, Mr. DeCasko will correct me if I'm wrong, we had been hosting a robotics competition at McManus Middle School. And while we had been hosting because we didn't have the curriculum in place yet, um, and the, I don't wanna say ability, but we didn't, we didn't feel the team because we didn't feel that we were ready yet. Well, Mr. DeCasko, um, an outstanding teacher at McManus Middle School, decided that this was the year that we would be ready. And, um, so we, we hosted this competition, and for our first year ever in this mathematics/robotics competition, our students, um, did extremely well. I'm gonna have Mr. DeCasko come up and say a few words about them, and tell you what the competition entails, and tell you how amazing our, our young students are. So, Mr. DeCasko, would you come up, please? The interesting thing about this is that, um, this event came to my attention because we had two of our Board of Education members who actually went. It was on Saturday, and Mr. Martuzzi and Mr. Shihada went, and they both came back glowing about how amazing our kids were, how great they, they did and what they accomplished. And, uh, they said, "Well, we have to recognize these students," and I said, "Absolutely." Um, so, Mr. Shihada, I asked, uh, he asked me if he could say a few words, and of course, it's a board meeting, of course he could say a few words. So, Mr. Shihada, would you come up and say a few words before we let, uh, Mr. DeCasko speak?
Parents, teachers, staff, thanks for coming tonight. Uh, I went to this robotics challenge early in January, and my tenth words go, show me some of the guys' support. Former teacher of mine stayed for about an hour or so, and when I got there, I got to see what the kids were doing, and it was incredible. I ended up spending about two or three hours there in shock. We had students from the ages of, you know, seven to eight, all the way up to, you know, high school students. And it was a fantastic event. Definitely, I hope we participate in it next year again. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. DeCasko for his leadership and guidance on this project, along with Mr. Happel, the custodial staff who spent literally all day there. They were there from 5:00 a.m. to about 7:00 p.m. cleaning up. I understand they gave up the Saturday for that, and we really appreciate that for him, Mr. DeCasko. We appreciate you for it. Thank you.
First thing is good evening. First thing is good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As my students know me, one-two-one-two. I always have to do a mic check first. And, uh, I wanna thank Dr. Robotozy, all the board members, Mr. Shihada, Mr. Martuzzi for coming. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Mike Walters and Mr. Musclary for actually, you know, allowing me to order all of the robotic kits and the sets. Because of the fact is, um, this isn't national, and actually it's a world competition. Uh, hosted by Bex, which is, uh, uh, basically nine out of ten schools that have robotics use Bex IQ or use Bex. And, uh, we've been hosting it alongside, uh, Mr. Ben Mitchell at the high school. Uh, he's also basically helped out a lot with the coaching and I assist as far as with hosting. And, um, just to keep everything short, um, we've been doing robotics since 2003. And, uh, long ago, I was sent all the way to University of Houston to do gear with technology. And, uh, I'm really, really proud, and finally it's about time. And I read one of the responses or replies on the post, and they said, "It's about time that we started doing robotics competitions in the middle school level." The only reason why in the past we haven't done it is that, as my robotics team can tell you, they were competing against seventy teams from all over the tri-state area. And this was actually the Northeast Region Final that was being hosted at McManus Middle School on January thirteenth. And all of those teams were actually competing since September. So they had already dedicated clubs that they were a part of, and a lot of them were actually teammates since fourth grade. So, uh, the, the team that you're gonna see tonight and hear about and that we're gonna recognize, they were just put together, okay, since September. And we've been training and building our robots, I would probably say since October. Um, and you're gonna get the cream of the crop right now because they went through a rigorous challenge. We tested every component, and they were the actual top of all my fourth, eighth grade classes. Where now, they've done their job because they're now, it's spread, the word is spread. You're now even have sixth graders coming after me, asking me that they want to be part of robotics team. Um, so it might be some extra work, Dr. Robotozy's over there. But I do have five daughters, so, uh, my wife did say if I take on anything else, that there might be some issues or problems. But, uh, I love what I do. I do what I love. And as all my students and some of the, even those on the bowling team remember, my chess club. I let everybody know. We never quit. And the phrase that we had going on, because we should have seen their faces, and it was in the article. They were pretty intimidating when he saw some of the robots and how fancy the robots were, because there was an inspection period that they had to bring it to the cafeteria. And, uh, their reaction when they saw the competition, um, basically looked like their balloon was deflated. And the phrase that I told to rally them up, as I said, it doesn't matter what it looks like, as long as it matters what, how it works. So, once we said that, and then they went into the preliminary round, they actually saw the Dicky compete. And out of the seventy teams, we came to fifth place. We also had, uh, we had an eleven place. Uh, we also had somebody in twenty-sixth place, and then we had somebody in place thirty-seven, and he ended up competing by himself because his partner, um, for whatever reasons, could not attend. And, uh, he competed against, uh, two-person robotic teams. reasons, could not attend, and he competed against two-person robot, robotic teams, and very proud of him, because he was ready to actually quit, when he noticed that his partner didn't show up, so he actually did very well also. So, thank you for your time, I know I've been talking for a long time, very proud, it's a long time calling, and I will promise you, I mean, what I say, say what I mean, and I'm gonna keep going, bigger things after this, but thank you.
Mr. DeCastro, thank you so much. Next year, re-expect the first place another way. DeCastro, I have the students' names here, I'm gonna call the students up, say a few words that Mr. DeCastro told me about you, I apologize in advance if I pronounce your name incorrectly. Kelvin Alarcia has taken gateway to technology with Mr. DeCastro for all three years at McManus. Mr. DeCastro says he's developed teamwork skills, he's a silent leader, and he leads with actions. Jakki Scott is a three-year gateway to technology student, also a silent leader, works well with staying on task, he's a known problem solver and thinker. That's pretty cool. Ryan Queery has been a gateway to technology for seventh and eighth grade, he's also emerged as a team leader, he's competitive, Mr. DeCastro told me he perseveres, and he was the student who represented his team alone at the competition, that's great character, good job, Ryan. Giovanni Boss has taken gateway with Mr. DeCastro for all three years at McManus, he's a competitor, Mr. DeCastro tells me that he was the team motivator in the January BEX competition, he supports his teammates, and we all know that's a really important role. Giovanni, would you please? Alex Lopez is a three-year gateway to technology student. He is a born leader. Alex used his observations to plan a strategy that would help his team, he has excellent planning skills. Alex, would you come up, please? Now, I hope Hiba Fatu is here, because she was the only female teammate. This is my first year, she's alive, she's alive, she went in my big jail in 18th grade, prior to eighth grade, which was mainly graphic designing, had nothing to do with robotics. She gained the respect of her team through her robotic skills, and she's a great competitor, and she represents the females, we need more females, do a good job, do a great job. And finally, Tyler Vogel has been with Mr. DeCastro all three years, described as a fierce competitor, Tyler shows that he's having fun while also competing, and that's really important for, and he's a born leader. And last but not least, we have a short student presentation. As I briefly mentioned earlier, I have a group of student, superintendent student ambassadors that I meet with on a regular basis, I think they only like to meet with me because I feed them, but that's okay, I'll keep feeding them as long as they come back. And we have a really, really outstanding young lady by the name of Bermuda Pierre, she is an outstanding student leader, and she had a proposal for me at our last meeting, which I absolutely loved, and asked her if she would share it with the board, which is why she is here tonight. Bermuda?
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Dr. Associate Members of the Board, I am the Cadet Commander Bermuda Pierre, I'm the Executive Officer of the NJRTO unit here at the Linden High School.
Good evening, Dr. Robotozy, Members of the Board, I am the Cadet Commander Bermuda Pierre, I'm the Executive Officer at the NJRTO unit here at Linden High School, and I'm also a member of the Student Ambassador. And today, it's my pleasure to present my project proposal to you, and it's the Wolf So, the Wolf Honor will be a project that will be used to demonstrate our gratitudes toward those who have joined our forces after they've graduated high school, and so we'll be working with our RTO and the Student Ambassador to make that happen. And these are the supplies that will be needed, and the total cost will be around $1,000 to $100, and we'll be needing wooden letters, because it's not to be across the academic building, and we'll need the Armed Forces seal, which are just seals with the different Armed Forces, so Navy, Army, Marines, and so on, and the picture frames to put in the pictures of the people who actually have joined Armed Forces after high school. And this is just an example from Jacksonbury High School, this is one of the schools that I've visited with my RTO unit when we go to drill comps, and it just inspired me because it looks really amazing. And this is the timeline, so at the end of March, we'll begin the search to know who actually went into the Armed Forces, and then we'll contact those people, get their pictures, and we'll be able to start putting them on the wall once we get the supplies. And in May, April, the pictures will be hung, and by the end of May, we'll have the wall completed, and I hope that we'll be able to reveal it in a big way with the Student
Do the Board of Education members have any questions for Bermuda? I think it's pretty outstanding that a young lady of this caliber is brave enough to come before you scared-looking folk. So, Bermuda, I don't speak for the board, but I, I think we might be on the LBI, and I think it's a wonderful thing. Now, do you have any idea approximately how many of our, of our current seniors are going into the military?
Six or seven.
Okay, they were just honored at the ceremony, right? And you wanna go back in time, just to last year, and you wanna start from last year, and go forward and do it every year?
For the eternity report, we have a recommendation for disenrollment of students, B.C., E.G., and E.D. I'll accept the motion.
I make that motion?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Guion?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoles?
Yes.
Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. Beviana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Instruction Committee upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent presents the following 31 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 7 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services, determination of related services, the assignment of a one-to-one paraprofessional, and the adjustment of tuition as per the NJDOE audit. 8 and 9 approve team sports schedules and weight room hours for the spring 2018 season. Item 10 amends board action on past CNI reports. 11 accepts curriculum. 12 accepts course description guides. 13 grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. 14 approves district field trips and amendments to field trips. 15 approves training for district staff. 16 approves professional development activities. Item 17 approves faculty Spanish communication project. 18 and 19 approve dates for state mandated science testing and grant permission for delayed spark times at Linden High School for park testing. 20 grant permission for a staff member to complete their principal internship with the Linden Public Schools. Item 21 grant permission for NIEAR to observe pre-K classrooms throughout the district. Items 22 and 23 grant approval for staff and students to visit from Allen, Texas, and for reimbursement to Collin Creek Travel Incorporated, so they may attend the Broadway Show and the 9/11 Memorial Museum. 24 grants approval for students from Linden High School, McMaths Middle School, and Soul Middle School to attend the Leadership Conference at TC and JED. Item 25 grants approval for Linden High School peer pals to walk to School One for student mentoring program partnerships. 26 approves the partnerships with the Linden Public Schools with the First Team National School Program sponsored by Elizabeth Town Gas. 27 approves grants approval for New Jersey Otterbaum Project coordinators to conduct classroom presentations for middle school students. 28 approves the bi-yearly summation report on HIV for all Linden Public Schools. 29 grant permission to apply to 2018-2019 ECPA-ELLI preschool program plan update and budget workbook. Item 30 recommends the month of March is Women's History Month to be celebrated in the Linden Public Schools, and Item 31 approves the superintendence determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the January 23rd, 2018 regular meeting. Mr. President, I will forward the instructions to items 1 through 31, I respectfully seek the second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Guion?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoles?
Yes.
Management Operations Report, Mrs. Bellani.
The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following items to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number one, can I pass over to Dr. Robotozy?
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. We were terribly saddened to hear about the passing of Mrs. Rosalie Bosco. Mrs. Bosco was a longtime teacher in Linden, she started her career in 1950, retired in 2000, there was some time off in between, but she was a fixture in this district. I first met Mrs. Bosco when she taught my nephew in kindergarten, and then later on, when I became an employee, the first apartment that I ever rented, she was my landlord, she was a good person to rent from.
We have to hector from that.
She was an amazing teacher, a fixture in Linden, and she will be sorely missed. Mr. Shahada?
Mrs. Bosco was my kindergarten teacher many years ago at School 6. It's hard to remember specific moments from 20 years ago, however, what I do remember was her loving nature, warm embrace, her passion for her students, and her love of teaching. Unfortunately, Mrs. Bosco and I fell out of touch, but occasionally, I will run it, run into, excuse me, around town and do talk for extended periods of time. She would always mention how when I was in her class, I was a handful, as she had my three cousins and I, which was definitely more than one person could and should handle. She would go on to tell me where she recently came back from as she was an avid traveler. It is my sincere hope that all who knew and loved Mrs. Bosco will be able to draw comfort from the memories they have of her, knowing her legacy will forever remain because of the hundreds of lives she has impacted such as mine. She will continue to live in our hearts, as for her family, we hope that God will continue to bless and strengthen you, and know you will always have a family here in us, here in Linden. May she rest in peace, thank you.
Ironically, I first met Aunt Rosalie on the day of her retirement party, and it was the first time that my boyfriend took me around to meet the family. And although we are sad at her passing, she lived an incredible life in her tracks away from Linden, she lived in England, in Germany, she traveled throughout the world, going to Egypt, and Hungary, and Russia, she met the Queen Mother, she met with Mother Teresa. She lived an incredible life and ended up here in Linden again. She was a big supporter of St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and in her memory, we just already sold $1,000 for that charity. So, it is a loss, but we do have great memories to cherish for the rest of our lives. Moving on to item number two, I will again pass this over to Dr. Robotozy.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. We have two retirements on the agenda tonight, Dorothy Grant and Joan Young. Dorothy has worked as a school secretary at the high school here since 2007, and although it doesn't seem like that long ago, she has become a fixture here at the high school, she welcomes everyone, everyone knows who she is. She's always singing Somewhere Over the Rainbow or some other song, and I know that when she retires, she'll be, she'll be singing a lot more, so I wanna just congratulate her on her retirement, she'll be skipping and singing on her way out the door here. And Joan Young, who's worked for the Board of Education for 30 years, Joan started her career as a first-grade teacher at School 4 in 1989, but I, I don't know Joan very well, but what I do know about Joan is there were many, many years where she had perfect attendance, and that's an accomplishment for a teacher, so. She will be missed, and I wanna thank both of these employees for their service to our district, to our community, and to our children, and wish them all the best when they retire.
Item number three approves the resignations as listed. Item number four amends board action on past management operations report as listed. Items number five, 11 through 15, 17, 18, 19, and 23 through 35 approves the appointments of various staff to a variety of positions for the 2017-2018 school year as listed. Six approves the transfer of the following staff as listed. Number seven approves the leaves of absences. Item number eight approves assignment upon return from leaves as listed. Item number nine approves the payment of salaries from the 2008 IDEA basic grant as listed. Number 10 approves funding of staff in Title A and Title Number ten approves funding of staff in Title A and Title II A as listed. Item number sixteen appoints musicians to accompany the 2017-2018 Linden High School musical production of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee as listed. Item number twenty approves the following job descriptions: title head teacher before after care program, program manager before and after care program. Twenty-one approves the motions to withhold the pay of an employee as listed. Item number two authorizes the collection and donation of sick days as listed. Mr. President, I move items one through thirty-five and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Support operations report, Mr. Martuzzi. The support operations committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the administrative board secretary present the following motions to the London Board of Education for approval, like to move one through twenty-two on support operations and for the facilities report, one through thirteen, ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Planning and policy, Mr. Shahada.
Planning and policy committee submits policies for first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies for the second reading. Twelve fifty, visitors updated to reflect new security requirements. Twenty-one thirty, the principal evaluation, policy was overall to be more consistent with the current law. Fifty-one thirty-one slash fifty-one thirty-one point two, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, minor changes throughout. Sixty-one seventy-one point three, Title One, improving academic achievement and parent and family engagement, policy updated to reflect the reauthorization of ESTA. Mr. President, I move planning and policy item number one and respectfully ask for a second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Guillaume?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozak?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Shahada?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Welsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes. EST for parents and high school, Mrs. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to preface my report with a synopsis of what happens at the actual process of the parent EST meetings, because there's some confusions. So we hold our monthly meeting at the administration building, and the board members are there to discuss all the great things that are going on in our district and some of the concerns that the parents have in the district. After the meeting, I make an appointment to sit with Dr. Robertozzi and let him know all of the feedback from that meeting. At that point, Dr. Robertozzi can address some of the matters immediately, and some may take some time, but all the concerns are addressed at some point before our next monthly meeting. I then read my report to the entire board at the committee of the whole, so they're aware of what's going on in our district. And then at the next parent EST meeting, we start off the meeting with a guest speaker in the beginning, then we go on to discuss the questions and concerns from the month prior, and then we move on to new business. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Robertozzi for being available to hear the concerns and for solving issues and concerns in a timely fashion with our parents. We held our parent EST meeting February 20th, 7:00 p.m. at the administration building. Mrs. Welsh, Mrs. Bellani, and myself attended that meeting. We had parents representing schools from our schools, from school five, school six, school nine, Soul, McMath, and Linden High School. Our guest speaker for the night was Cindy Sue and Marsha from Pomptonian Food Services, which is our school lunch provider. We have National Breakfast Week coming up the first week of March, where they put out a wonderful buffet for our high school students. Each month, they do a pasta day where they have a chef come in and they have a pasta machine, and the students get, this is on the elementary level, they get to see the pasta being made, and it will go to all of our elementary schools, so by the end of the school year, each school will be able to see that. The high school now has smoothies, and it's going to go down into our middle schools, so the middle school students are very excited about that. And the cafeteria also does some great programs where they bring in chefs and they do, for the Chinese New Year, they did noodles. They had some sushi rolls, but no raw fish, and there's some great things happening in our cafeteria, so we're very excited. There was a concern that over at school one, the students were being told that they could only take one piece of fruit, and what we would like to let all of the students know is that they are welcome to take as many helpings of fruits and vegetables at their vegetable stand, fruit and vegetable stand, so that they have whatever it is they want from those stands, they can have as many helpings as they like. Some of the concerns that are going on within the district, they said that there's some new cameras that were installed, and the staff and the teachers aren't able to see the cameras. That's all being worked out. There's some passwords and stuff that need to be taken care of, and they'll all be set up and running for the cameras. Dr. Robertozzi, I'd like to turn this over to you. The students are talking about having a walkout in both the high school and the middle school, and I'd like you to just give your report on what we are going to be doing.
Sure, Mrs. Burke, thank you. Sure, I've seen the talk and social media actions about a walkout potentially on March 14th. And listen, the truth is, as superintendent, I support our students' rights to speak out. If it's something our students feel strongly about, then we're going to support them. My only concern as a superintendent is to make sure that our kids are safe while doing it, so if our students decide to peacefully protest, we will support them in a way that keeps them safe.
That's okay.
I do know certainly at the high school already, there have been conversations with several student leaders and the principal about plans for that day. I have a meeting scheduled with the principals and the Linden Police Department on March 6th, where we will discuss ways that we can support the students. Again, my goal is to support the students' rights, peacefully protest, while making sure that they do it safely.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. There were some concerns, parents would like to see some metal detectors or more teachers at the doors of our schools being monitored. They also would like to, there were some concerns about visitors coming into the building and how they're allowed into the building. They would like to see Dr. Robertozzi and security come to our next meeting, and they'd like to have more meetings, they would like us to have more meetings with the students about security. The main concern was that there was some lighting issues at probably most of our schools at night events, like dances and aftercare programs, when it does start to get dark, that there's some concerns about the lighting issue. There was a concern brought up about the crossing guard at McMath. We did let the parent know. Unfortunately, we do not, we are not in charge of the crossing guards, and that does fall on the Linden Police Department, so we were able to give her the information to contact who she needed to contact. There was a concern about the foundation of the girls' basketball team at the middle school. There was also a concern about baseball and the amount of children that were trying out for the team. There were some concerns about sanitizing the buildings because of the flu. And the parents would like to see more superintendent chats in the evening, because they love chatting with the superintendent. And the parents would like to see more board members attend their parent EST meetings. Some of the wonderful things going on in the district that they reported to us was each of the buildings had Black History Month celebrations, and the parents are excited about attending these events. McMath had their family dinner night. The first year, they started with 10 families. The second year, they had 30 families, and this year, they had over 200 people attend, so they're very excited about that. The Adams Family Play at McMath is amazing. They said the choreography, the directing, the music, the whole, the whole entire program is just amazing. School five reported that their events are pretty much standing room only, and they're very happy about the parents coming out and supporting the children. School six is very excited about duct taping their principal to the wall for charity. And they're also looking forward to Beauty in the East, that's going to be at Soul Middle School for their play, and the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee at the high school. And our next meeting is going to be March 20th at 7:00 p.m. in the administration building. We're going to have coffee and snacks, so please come out and attend. We would love to have you there. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
You do students?
I sure am.
The student EST. Mrs. Burke meets with the students here at Dyson.
I'd also like to preface this by saying, Mrs. Torrey, the principal at the high school, is invited to attend our meetings. She comes at the end, and she answers whatever questions she can, and concerns that she has right there on the spot, she can answer them for the children. If she can't answer them immediately, she'll say to them, "Come and see me in the office, shoot me an email, let me get an answer, and I'll get back to you." And we thank Mrs. Torrey for taking the time out of her busy schedule to sit down with the students and address any situations that were important to the children. We had our student EST February 22nd in the cafeteria at 8:43 in the morning. Mr. Fekiti was our, I'm sorry, he was in attendance, and he is our advisor. We had four freshmen, two sophomores, three juniors, and two seniors. We also had two eighth-grade students sit in. They were Tigers for the day, so that was great to have them there with us. We had, I'm sorry, let me just, okay. We, there were some concerns, of course, with some cafeteria issues that are being addressed. I did sit down with Pomptonian, and they are aware of all of the concerns, and they're being addressed, if not already addressed. Some of the concerns are like hand portion controls. The kids are saying some are getting more fries and some are getting less fries. They were interested in getting the lunch menu put on campus. The students said they're having an issue with feeling safe with the lockdown in the cafeteria, so they wanted to know some of the logistics of how the cafeteria is locked down when they're there. They did discuss with me some of their insight on what they would like to do for March 14. Instead of doing a walkout, they're thinking of doing what's called a sit-in, and they were going to do a peaceful sit-in, where they're going to read the names of the students over the loudspeaker with some chimes and some other things that they have planned. They haven't finalized it yet, but they're looking to do more of a sit-in than a walkout. They were asking that there be more police presence in the building. They said friendly faces always help. They asked Mrs. Torrey and the board if they could have more assemblies about school security and lockdowns. They wanted to see if we could put into the gym curriculum self-defense class. Like they do rotations for weight room and yoga, they'd like to put self-defense as a rotating marking period class. They were concerned with some of the activities in gym. They said that they're not getting their full 25 minutes of activity, so they were asking if we could look into that. There were, of course, some bathroom cleanliness issues that they talked about, toilet paper, soap, paper towels. They said it's very hard, you know, for them to use the restrooms when it's always out. But they did say that they would like to see some water fill stations with the water fountains, instead of having the water fountains, the water fill stations are more sanitary. The things that they were discussing that were great, they said the vending machines that were just put into the cafeteria were awesome. They said that the staff and the teachers and faculty are all checking for IDs, and it makes them feel very safe, and they're happy that they're doing these checks, and they wanted to continue. They are excited about the play coming up and some other events that they're going to be holding, and we have not set a date yet for the next student EST. For the students to get that date will let you know, and that does conclude my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke. I inadvertently skipped the committee, so I'm going to go back and do that now. Negotiations committee, Mrs. Bellani.
Oh, the negotiations committee, we met with the administration, and we have a date set to meet with the lovely opposition on March 7th, and we will take it from there.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. EST for middle school students, Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes. Mrs. Guillaume and I met with the middle school kids last week. We spent, we went to Soul at 9:00 a.m., spent an hour and a half with about 10 students, sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade, we toured McMath around 1:30, and we spent about an hour and a half with them, and we had a good educational conversation as far as middle school kids. And when I look at middle school kids, I've been a teacher and administrator of middle school for 40 years. Middle school kids are absolutely unique. I mean, absolutely, totally unique, and I honestly can say, you know, being an educator over the years, a middle school teacher should get twice the pay than the other teachers get, because dealing with that age group is so difficult, is so, so difficult, and you got to love it, though. You really do have to love it. And, you know, and after, we got to know each other pretty good, we had a pretty good conversation. And the first thing actually we talked about, that I asked them the question, because it's been on the news all the time as far as safety is concerned, and the question that I actually asked them, what do you feel about having to feel safe? Do you feel safe when you come to school? I wanted to know that, and they all said yes, and they talked about the safety in school, they talked about how's the safety out of school when you leave in the morning, early in the afternoon, when you have six hundred kids releasing at the same time. And the only little complaint that we had over in Soul was over on East Delve, it's a street that's totally, totally very tight at the end of the day, with the buses coming there, but the parking lot is, there's a new parking lot we put in, and that was, as far as that was concerned. And what we talked about as far as education is the classroom itself, and we asked them, you know, what do you like about school, what you don't like about school? What do you like about teaching, what your teachers, and what you don't like about teachers? And what the consensus was is that on both the kids, sets of kids in both schools, is they like to have group work. They like, they learn better in group work. So I said to them, and I talked to the board about this the other night, it was really quite funny. I said, "You want teachers to be facilitators, right?" And maybe I used a word that was a little above the middle school, and I had a little sixth grade kid at McMath, I remember the kid from the play, and I said, "Facilitator." And you know what a facilitator phrase is? And we knew what a facilitator was, and the other kids were saying, "Yeah, we like to have, you know, like team teaching, like the teachers coming in with the coaches and team teaching, and we learn better that way. We don't like the teachers that we stand up and lecture." And I said, "Well, yes, I mean, teachers are going to be facilitators, and they like that." And that was, all the kids said they learned better that way, because when you talk to that middle school kid, middle school kids' attention span is about 15 minutes, and then they start to drift a little bit, but they kept telling us that, "Look, you know, we love team teaching." They talked about some teachers that did it really, really great, and some didn't. And I said, "Well, I know, I talked to the superintendent about it, which I did, and maybe you can talk to the principals and maybe have a little bit more, the teachers doing a little more being facilitators." And so anyway, that conversation was pretty good, and the conversation actually lasted quite an hour and a half, went like that, and then we started, one question I asked them about reading, and do you like the books that you're reading? We started to get into that a little bit, but kind of ran out of time, but a couple of girls, a couple of eighth grade girls were talking about some of the books that they liked to read, they liked reading mysteries and things like that, and they talked a little bit about their reading list in the summertime, and they like to have like better books. So I don't know too much on the list and not, but that's what the kids really like to do, they like to read, and God bless them, and they love to read, they love to read, they learn to read, you're a good reader in your own, you're a good reader in your own. learn to read, you're a good reader, you're young, you're a good reader on your own. And they talked about that, which I talked to the superintendent about. And then I said, "The last ten minutes," I said, "What about the building?" "Hang on, hang on, tell me, is there anything in the building structured, the plant itself that you don't like?" And the kids pretty much over in Soul just talked about the infamous water bathrooms, the tissues here, tissues there, but that's an administrator problem, that's something, you run out of tissues sometimes, you get a whole other custodian, you put a man, you got to fix, dah 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 dah. That's, and one thing what the girl said about, "We don't have any mirrors, we want mirrors," and there weren't any mirrors there, but, and then the guy, yes, the guy, "Do you want any mirrors?" But I said, "No, I don't want a mirror, but..." And then all of a sudden, they are getting new bathrooms in McManus, I think this year, so this summer. So otherwise, that's how the conversation went. We didn't get too deep into, we wanted to get into, but I said to them that, you know, we'll continue this, you know, next month. I mean, you know, as an educator myself, and, you know, there's always room to learn. Kids will tell you what they want. They're going to tell you how they want to learn, they're going to tell you what works for them, and that's what we've got to learn as adults, to what works in a classroom and what makes it work for them. Because if it works for them, it works for us, and that's what we really want. And that's how it went, and I'd just like to thank both the advisors, because they sent us, ten kids in Soul, ten kids in McManus, these kids are great. I mean, I loved talking to them, they were great, the sixth grades, seventh grades, and eighth grades. We had a great time and I'm looking forward, as you are, I'm sure, to see them next month also, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Martuzzi, the special ed E S T is coming up, the meeting's coming up.
Yes, I talked last month, it's the same thing, it's, I got just a panic, on the Department of Special Education, Accessing Services, and National Reports, on March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, seven o'clock to eight o'clock, at the Academy of Excellence at Hustler Street in Linden. They are having a presentation by Teresa Jambu Busseco, Director of the Ark of New Jersey, and is planning for the Adult Life Series. It's on the website, if you'd like to go, it's, I'm sure it's a very interesting topic, Mrs. Fannick does a great job over there, and if you're interested in going, it's on the website, if you have any questions, you can call her, and that will be again, and I repeat, on March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, from seven o'clock to eight o'clock at the Academy of Excellence on Hustler Street. And that's it.
Thank you. There is no state, uh, county report at this month, the county, there is a meeting later this month, Unsung Heroes, it's at Broadway High School. We have, any board members that want to attend, please let Ms. Gaylord know, we have to register as a unit. That concludes that report. Ed Services Commission, Ms. Guillaume, was there a meeting at services? No. All right, thank you. All right. Comments from board members, what do you do?
Oh, no, I thought there was a meeting, there's another one coming up on March seventh, and I know we have negotiations that night, so we're going to have to, it's a, since it's a budget meeting, they ask that every district send somebody, we can have one of our other members go.
I have a comment. Blank.
Ready to go.
You know, we have a lot of great things going on in our district, but I just wanted to mention one that I'm very passionate about. I wanted to give a shout-out to the middle school wrestling team, Coach Corcel and his assistant, Jason Chapman, who happens to be a volunteer. They did an amazing job this year with the team, and I really just wanted to mention a student, a wrestler there, Samuel Richardson. He just started wrestling last year, was his first year, he's in eighth grade, and he ended up this year with a fifteen and two record. He took first place in the Princeton Tournament, and he was the Middlesex County Champion at a hundred and seventy pounds. He also took first place in the state qualifier, pinning his opponent from South Plainfield, which is a powerhouse in wrestling, in the finals in the first period. And he continues on to the state championship on March tenth and eleventh, and I just wanted to wish Sam good luck on behalf of the board, and also shout-out to my daughter Caitlin, who was the middle school wrestling manager.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yeah, I almost forgot, I just looked at the superintendent's report and I'd be totally remiss if I didn't mention her name. You know, there's a science teacher that's over in Soul, Ms. Kimberly Light, who received a good award, it was on the papers a couple of weeks ago, on who makes magic in science classroom. And all I can tell you is that Kimberly was one of the great, we have really great student teachers that came through Soul over the last seven or eight years, I mean, great student teachers that end up actually being hired in our district, and she was one of them. She actually was under Ms. Tollinger, which is a great science teacher in McManus here. She was a student teacher underneath her, and she was fantastic. And what happened is that she got the job, she got a science job, opened up the volume here, and I can tell you is that when she was applying for jobs, I know for a fact, about five of the districts wanted her. Because I know for a fact when she was interviewing and she was going around, and I said, "Where are you going to go?" And she said, "I'm going to take the Linden job." And I'm so glad she did because she is such a great science teacher, and she's one of the virtue of teachers I know, believe me, that does not have a bad day. She never has a bad day, she's always smiling, always happy, never has a bad day. And I congratulate her for the job she did.
I've often had the same conversation with parents, I've had it with Dr. Robert Tozzi and several members of the boards, I know we all kind of have the same feeling, and that it's very important for children to see a reflection of themselves in positions of authority. And right now, we have a diverse board, we have black and white and Hispanic people on the board, we have retired and active teachers, we have graduate students, parents and grandparents, we have people ranging from in their early twenties all the way up through beyond the twenties. So as we are closing out the, as we are closing out this year's Black History Month, I would like to take a moment to recognize several of the board members who are people of color throughout the years, and I know this is not a comprehensive list, but as far as we keep the records, I think this is what we have. So I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to Bernice Davis, Morris Smith, Erin Evans, Abner Smith, Mildred McAlpin, William Mobley, Elijah Johnson, Councilwoman of the First Ward, Lisa Orman, Raul Donaldson, Jacqueline Williams, and Ms. Lolita Slater. And I'd like to assure you that we are going to continue Dr. Robert Tozzi's great job in upping the numbers of minority teachers and administrators, and I hope that the public continues devoting people who reflect our district and have our best children, have the best for our children at heart. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw, anyone else, anyone on that end? I will conclude the board comments by saying, this weekend, four of our board members got the opportunity to go down to Princeton for the weekend and get trained. Ms. Guillaume, Ms. Kozak, Mr. Shahada, and Ms. Welch spent, I would say, almost the entirety of the weekend learning and eating. It's one of the things that we do with school boards, is we feed you. So I want to commend them for their perseverance and their stick-to-do-ness. It is a very hard, very tough weekend, but it is a very rewarding weekend, and I want to thank you all for making the effort to go through that, what I consider torture.
It was very worthwhile and enlightening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Oh, one other thing I want to comment on. Dr. Robert Tozzi, in the beginning of his superintendent superintendent's report, talked about safety and things like that. To that end, Dr. Robert Tozzi and I discussed, and we have established an ad hoc committee to review all of our safety policies and our facilities, and any possible things that we might be able to do to improve the safety of our district. Members of that committee are Mrs. Belloni, Mr. Shahada, Mrs. Birch, and Ms. Guillaume. So if you have any suggestions that you and the audience might think might help, contact them, contact Dr. Tozzi or myself, and we'll make sure we discuss that, and that concludes that. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.